Recording in progress.
You good to go? Good to go? Sure, alright. I'd like to call the Tuesday, March 1st meeting of the San Jose County Board of Commissioners to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first item on the agenda, opening reading of bids. There are none. We'll move on to reports and requests. First from the Board of Commissioners. First item is the Accounts Payable Docket. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alright, next we move on. The Employee of the Month and Business of the Month are going to be tabled until next meeting because we had some conflicts with schedules. But, that moves us on to still one of the best things that we get to do as Commissioners and elected officials, to celebrate people that do great work in our community. And I think there's no one who fits that bill better than our Citizen of the Year, Commissioner Fleming. Turn it over to you.
Well, I am so very, very proud that the Citizen of the Year for 2021 is Ethan Hunt. And Ethan has-
Has given a round of applause.
Yes. And I was so excited and so proud that he has created the soccer school in Mishawaka over there. And so I think it's just really great that he's doing that and helping everybody. So, and again, he's from Mishawaka and I've known him for a long time and I'm so proud. Yes. So would you like to come up and get any?
Well, Commissioner Dieter, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you very much. Yeah, we had a, our annual, first annual, and we will do it until some of us no longer have a district. But, we had a yearly award where people were honored. Unfortunately, Ethan and everybody else there was tied up. So, we had over, close to ninety people, thank to Augustino Firm for participating and sponsoring the event. So that worked very well. So we had a great time. So, again, I appreciate all that you're doing for the team. And I think every kid's gonna speak about you today here at the-
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Alright, but again, for those who have never coached or whatever, he's coached extensively. We've all coached. It's, as they say, a labor of love. There's a lot of work that goes into it. And again, I appreciate everything that you're doing for the community, especially with soccer. And all these young, young men and/or women are appreciative of all the work that you're doing. So, if you'd like to come up to the mic and you can speak.
And while Ethan's walking, I will also add, I mean, Ethan, keep walking. We can, you know, fill the time while you're walking up. It's great.
Multitasking.
I mean, Ethan is exactly the kind of person that we envision when we talk about a Citizen of the Year because they greatly impact our community and especially the young people, just to give them opportunities and advantages. So Ethan, you're fantastic. So say a couple of words.
You have three minutes.
Are you gonna start playing the music when it's time to go? So, first of all, Commissioners Dieter, Castelni, and Fleming, I really appreciate it. It's a humbling honor to be chosen. Just can't really express how grateful I am. When I found out, I was, I just was in shock. So, thank you. I just want to tell a quick story about kind of how this all happened. This time last year, we had two students enrolled for the fall. So, we, you take a risk and you don't know necessarily if it's, you know, what's gonna happen. But I think that's the best part about America is you can achieve your dreams if you, if you just work really hard. And so, last time this year, we didn't have any teachers. We had two students. And now we have thirty-one students. And this fall, we're gonna have sixty students. So, just really, really grateful for these kids and their parents and the kids really believing in this school. And their lives are gonna be changed going to college and playing soccer because of it. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to say too, you know, when I was there listening to the parents, you know, last year, oh my gosh. I was so impressed that they were so excited about it and so, yes. So, yeah, I was glad I was there to hear that. Thank you.
Thanks.
This award also comes with three years of Dieter's security monitoring. So, congratulations there as well.
That's right.
Come on up. If the students want to come up as well?
Go, get up here. Oh, come on in. Who's your midfielder? Who's the midfielder here? Hey, little people in front, big people in the back. We need, come down, we'll do a sit-down on one knee in front. Let's get a couple of people up here. Can you get everybody in, Frank, or no? Hey, some people come down here and get on one knee. Traditional falls. Come on. Down here. Not you, stand up. Come on, come on. From by here in? Down on one knee. Left thing on your thigh, right hand over in a cluster. Move down out the way a little more. Keep going, keep going, little dudes. And then- For your pictures? Got it? You got it. Thank you all. Good job, huh? Who's the best player? That's a good job. Everybody's the best. Alright, keep it up. I see you later. Let me know. Alright, see you.
Not that we wouldn't love for you to stay. You're also, if you've got someplace else to be, you're more than, more than welcome to get back to class. So, well- There you go. So that brings us to another great honor, is each month, we honor the employees of San Jose County who dedicate themselves to not only the county government, but to our citizens as well. So now we get to, for the first time, announce our Employee of the Year, Commissioner Dieter.
Drum roll, please. Thank you. The Employee of the Year, Julie Toby. If will you step up to the microphone?
Let's give her a round of applause as she's walking up.
I see. Ray, are you on? Hello, Ray?
Affirmative.
Okay. This is the Director of PSAP, Raymond Schultz. And before the Commissioners say anything, I'd like Ray just to extend his congratulations and just give a brief bio of the young lady who won this award.
Good morning, Raymond Schultz, former Executive Director at PSAP, Office 58266 Downey Avenue. I couldn't be more proud of the county recognizing Julie for her achievements. She's a fifteen-year employee, starting with County Fire and then coming over with the Consortium and the epitome of leadership within our organization. And I think that although she's been nominated a few times, the situation that stands out to me was when we had a tornado come through town and it was a sudden event without even time for the radar to pick it up. But she noticed it and called the 911 center, activated, they had them activate the tornado sirens. That's the tornado, if you remember, that went through. I think it's growing kids down on Ireland. That one event probably saved more than one life because she was able to recognize and get those. And that's kind of, that's the person that she is. Day off, at home with her family, notices something and springs into action and, and just does an amazing job for us. So, I'm very proud of her. She's come a long way. She's, she's a special, just a special human. So, what a great honor and thank you for recognizing her.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fleming?
Oh, just thank you for all you do. I'm so proud of you. Yes, very nice. Thank you.
I will add, you can, you can tell how deserving this is by watching Julie when Ray is saying the things that he did, how uncomfortable she was during the entire process. But that means you can just tell how worthy it is and that you always put the citizens and your coworkers first. So we appreciate everything that you do.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the crowd like to speak? Okay. I'd like to commend Julie. She's been there since PSAP started, worked very hard, has taken over the role of her time there as the training instructor, now has stepped up to be the interim director. It's a very unique place to be. It's a lot of hard work by a lot of great people in the community to, to keep that center going. So I appreciate all the work that she has done, being a leader now as the interim director, to keep the place running smoothly. So, again, thank you for all your hard work. And you can come up and get this Crystal Award. I think it's a Crystal. Yeah. Back to work, and we'll be talking about you in a little bit. Woods was always photobombous.
Alright, now we move on to the Approval of American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Fund Subrecipient Agreement, Our Lady of the Road. Mr. Mish, can you kind of walk us through the last couple of weeks?
So, long story short, we received certain information that warranted looking into. The county wanted to ensure that we were abiding by our state and federal requirements for using the funding. I was tasked with going through the records that the county had, as well as records that Our Lady of the Road had. They were very helpful. They turned over at least four hundred records. We went through a stack of several thousand records. Ultimately, I think our conclusion was, these are good people doing a good thing, but maybe in an unorganized way. And so, we have worked with Steve Dalton to come up with a standard operating procedure for use of ERP funding and, or, I'm sorry, ERA funding. And in all of this, the Commissioners had decided, you know, halt what was going on with Our Lady of the Road as far as the ARP funding. And at this point, I don't think we have any problem moving forward. Nothing illegal was found. I think the county has covered its bases to ensure that we're in compliance where we need to be. And the only modifications we had made to the contract going forward with approval of the ARP funding is instead of the county contracting directly with the motel, Our Lady of the Road will have that responsibility. The funding is not changed at all. And I think it's worth pointing out that the, the contract was reviewed by Our Lady of the Road and that this contract is contingent upon passage of the funding ordinance by the council, which would be, they'd have to override the veto. But the Commissioners have indicated they want to take the step of taking a look at this contract, assuming that that funding will be available to fund the contractual provisions.
Thank you, sir. And just as further clarification, the action that was taken two weeks ago was not indicative of a feeling of Our Lady of the Road and the job they're doing. It was, there was an issue where some doubts were raised. We wanted to make sure that those, we could answer the questions, that everything was being done the way it should be. So we've got some, some minor administrative piece that, that will be initiated. But, you know, and we're, we're taking the unordinary step of, we're looking to pass an agreement before there's actually funding for it. That's how strongly we believe. At least I will speak for myself, believe in the work that Our Lady of the Road is doing. We just want to make sure, you know, as I've said before. The preferred method would have been, we paused, we got the questions answered, and then we moved forward. But that wasn't available to us. The only tool in our toolbox was a hammer. So that was the only tool that we had to be able to use. So, I think there's, this, this shows the continued commitment of San Jose County, moving forward for the great work that Our Lady's doing. And hopefully then, we can help them be more efficient and more effective as well. So, anything else that the other Commissioners might like to add?
Well, I just want to say, I'm glad that we're supporting this. So I'm appreciative to approve it, yes.
Commissioner Dieter?
Okay, so that was, okay. Alright, thank you. I appreciate all the hard work of, first, the people that are out there working with the homeless people in the community. It's a very tough and long, long job. Again, all the work that our attorney put into this. And just for clarification, these Commissioners, nor the County Council, nor the City Council, are stupid or reckless. Okay? I want to make that clear. We were given information and we looked into this. So, we went into getting all the records to make sure everything is okay, which it is. Like our attorney alluded to, there's some accounting and some procedural things that need to be cleaned up a little bit. And I believe the attorney for, for them has agreed to that. So again, the, the way that we were characterized as we're mean and uncaring and stuff isn't remotely true. We were elected to make sure that the money being spent in this county is being spent the right way. So, when we have things that come up before us, we look into it, we investigated it, and we came to the conclusion that no one, I'll just say it, hotels for now and Our Lady of the Road did anything wrong. It's just that their accounting couldn't improve. And so that's what Mr. Mish has suggested. So, again, I have no problem of approval of that contract, which would be new. And again, up to the County Council to do what they do. So, I just wanted to clarify that, that we were not acting out of malice. And all the emails that we got suggesting that were not even remotely correct. So again, appreciate the work that everybody over there is doing. And I have nothing further at this time.
I do want to thank Mike Mish for the Herculean task that he undertook in making sure that this, everything was being done properly. So I appreciate his work in this as well.
Me too. Yes.
There are no more questions or comments. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the ARP funding agreement for Our Lady of the Road.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm voting aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alright, that moves us to Approval of Resolution R6C-2022, Resolution of the San Jose County Board of Commissioners, Establishing Commissioner Districts and Amending Commissioner Resolution Number R28C-2021. Mr. Mish?
This has been a process that has gone on for approximately two months now. I think as the public well knows, their Commissioners had passed maps within their legal obligation to do so. Council passed a ordinance that gave a couple of options and then initiated litigation. The Council and Commissioners have worked together with Special Judge Stephen Hostetler, acting as mediator, to attempt to come to a resolution. What's before the Commissioners today is that proposed resolution, which will ultimately go in front of a judge for a full resolution of the litigation, ending the continuation of that litigation. What the Commissioners are tasked with today is the potential approval of new Commissioner districts that have been, again, mediated out and apparently agreed upon, at least in principle, by certain parties to the litigation.
So the, the process would be Commissioners take action today. I believe Council has called a special meeting tonight to take care of their action. But what we are, what's before us today is passing modified Commissioner maps. So we would not, we are not having anything to do with Council maps at this point, but we are passing agreed-upon Commissioner maps.
And in a point of clarification, there, the statute that we're functioning under does give the court the authority to enter a resolution to this litigation, to allow for modified maps that would put that litigation behind us, and also to extend certain deadlines as necessary while still complying with state and federal guidelines.
I also want to thank Mr. Mish for his tireless work through this process. I also want to thank Councilmember Corey Nolan. He and I were kind of tasked with, with moving this process forward. And he did an amazing job trying to herd his kittens as well. So, I appreciate all the efforts that have gone into this to this point. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Sure. Has the County Council come to an official vote on their part of this?
That will be tonight.
Okay. Why are we acting before they do?
My understanding is, and Counselor can correct me if I'm wrong, because the, the process is, we pass our Commissioner districts, and then they have, theirs have to nest within ours. So until ours are established, they cannot take action.
Okay. And is that, I guess, in conjunction with their possibly dropping a lawsuit against the Commissioners?
Mr. Mish?
Yes, that's, that's the contention, is that these maps will be passed, the Council will pass their nested maps, and there will be a request for court approval tomorrow to dismiss the lawsuit.
Okay, but we, do we know if they're doing that?
Yes, we have been in communication with their Council from-
We do not know if they're doing that, but-
But we don't have a vote.
Right, they will vote tonight. And obviously, if they don't vote tonight, then nothing changes. So then we're, we continue where we are.
Okay. Well, y'all know my opinion on this. I won't vote for this. Again, all the negotiations that went on, went on with whoever was negotiating for the Commissioners, was not me. And negotiating with the Democratic-led Council to give the Democrat people more districts than theirs, hence, they liked it. So apparently, they're dropping the lawsuit. So, in all of that, there was never any improvement in my own district. But everybody worked to make sure the Democrats got what they wanted, including Diana Heskaud a district now, before she didn't. And the other Democratic districts were strengthened. And my, my, what's left of my second district was not. So, again, shockingly, I would be voting against it because I don't think the process was fair. There was no input during these negotiations from me of Commissioner Dieter, would you like to have center? Would you like to have union in your district? So, for that reason, I'm not gonna vote for this. And I'll answer any questions anybody has.
Any other questions or comments from the Board?
Commissioner Castelni, I think just one thing to point out, under the ADR rules, since we were in a official mediation, this couldn't be shared with the public. This could not be shared with other members outside of the individuals who were mediating. And so that's why it was essentially behind closed doors because we were following Indiana rules.
Of course. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
A motion to approve this resolution R-6-C-2021 for amending the Commissioner maps.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Nay.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Motion passes two to one. And just my, not so final comments, but other comments are, this is a, I do believe the Board of Commissioners acted in an appropriate manner in, in exercising our responsibilities. And about the maps that we passed were good and clean, cleaner than the maps that, that we agreed to. But, once again, the important piece was for us to come together as both Council and Commissioners. And that's what I believe that we did. And in any true mediation, I think no side left feeling good about the compromise that was made. But I think a compromise was necessary. So, there you go. Alright.
I disagree with your characterization.
Moving on to the Prosecutors. Approval of continuation of Prosecutor's VOCA Grant.
Yes, Bob Reisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office is on the 10th and 6th floor of this building. We're here requesting permission to apply for a new VOCA grant. It's actually a continuation of a grant that we've held for twenty years. It's a two-year grant for one hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars, and there's no match required. This is to fund the Victim Services Unit in the Prosecutor's Office.
Any comments or questions from the Board?
Sure, I have a question. Where does, where does, how may that money be spent?
For the salaries, partial salaries of the victim advocates, three people.
So it just goes to the, to the victim, the advocate of that? It can't go for any other personnel in the county?
No.
County Prosecutor's Office?
No, the individuals are named by name in the grant itself, and that's who you're restricted to pay. We can change the name if one of those people happens to retire or whatever. But it's for three people, and they accompany victims to court.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the Prosecutor's VOCA, V-O-C-A, grant.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm voting aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Moving on to the Health Department. Approval to apply for grant to help the Health Department translate for their Suicide Overdose and Adverse Childhood Experiences Prevention Capacity Assessment Tool results into actionable guidance towards improvement.
Yes, Amy Rupe, Administrator for the Department of Health, with offices on the 8th and 9th floor. And before you, as a request of support to apply for a grant through Nacho, the amount is nineteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars in order to prevent ACEs, which are adverse childhood experiences, through partnerships in our community.
Any questions or comments?
Yes. Amy, have you guys had this grant before?
No, this is a new grant that we are applying for. We have not had anything of this nature in the past.
Okay, and you feel confident that you will get this?
We hope so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this grant opportunity.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm voting aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye. All right, moving on to the CASA Program of St. Joseph County, approval to apply for VOCA grant, two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-four.
Good morning, Brenda Matthews Skavitch, Executive Director, CASA Program of St. Joseph County, and our offices are located at the Juvenile Justice Center at one thousand South Michigan Street. Our request is similar to Mr. Reisenhofer. We are requesting to reapply for VOCA. This would be our third grant if we are successful in receiving it from VOCA. We received notification recently from the Indiana Justice Institute that the grant is now open. It's due March thirty-first. This grant is a reimbursement grant. There is no match required by the county. The grant does pay for three staff, their salary and their benefits, and those staff members directly serve children who are adjudicated children in need of services. So there's been abuse or neglect identified, and they provide direct service to these children. These three staff positions assist us greatly in reducing our waitlist, if not eliminating, our waitlist of children. We are currently in a grant cycle. That grant cycle ends September thirtieth, and this new grant cycle, if successful, would start ten one.
Thank you. Any questions for Brenda? Is there a motion?
Yes, a motion to approve for, reapply for the VOCA grant.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye. Next, the Infrastructure Planning and Growth, acceptance of RNS nine two one zero one D Maintenance Asphalt Overlay Program Community Crossings Magic Grant Project Completion Affidavit. Mr. Sky.
Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floor of this building. What this is, is this is the final bit of administrative item that we need to close out this project, which is our 2021 Community Crossings Grant Paving Project. We have reviewed this item and request your signature, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there in fact any questions or comments?
Sure. Sky, nice color shirt, by the way.
Thank you.
Hey, what, do you have a preliminary areas that that would cover?
This is the paving project that happened in 2021.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, we're still hoping to receive the, hoping that we, we have applied for 2022 Community Crossings Grant. We haven't heard about whether or not we were awarding that yet.
Okay. If not, I would encourage you to get ahold of the county council for some of that ARP money.
Yes.
In the next session.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Excuse me, I just have a question, though. So you said the final project cost is two million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars-ish? So that went up more?
It, it did increase some because we extended the limits of some of the roads. Of that two point seven million, a million of that was from the state as part of the matching grant. So it did go up some, and we covered that in a change order last year. I believe I brought that before the board.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion to approve this.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm voting aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye. Thank you, Sky.
Thank you.
Moving on to old business, we have no action at this point on the old business. And finally, we have an add-on for your meeting pleasure, Executive Order one dash two two. Counselor, or as I believe.
Either counselor.
Mr. Augustino can speak on this one.
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners, Peter J. Augustino with offices at one thirty-one South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana. The executive order before you is a necessary item today in light of the appointment of Julie Toby as interim director. To clarify chain of authority with respect to her mother, who was a dispatcher in the center, we're removing any authority over Ms. Kroger from Julie Toby and assigning it to Nancy Lockhart, so that we are in compliance with state statutes regarding anti-nepotism, as well as the county's policy that prohibits that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for Pete? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve this executive order.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm voting aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye. That brings us to the public comment portion of our meeting. Are there any public comments? Note, you're limited to three minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Dan Caruso, three zero five Compton Street. Want to introduce myself to my new Commissioner. Nice to meet you, Commissioner Castelny. Couple of issues to address right off the bat is this trailer park that was supposed to be removed. In fact, a gentleman named Mr. Castelny said, called it an eyesore. And there's eight trailers remaining from the twenty-seven that were originally in there. But added to the collection now is some big crane that supposedly belongs to NIPSCO that I'm guaranteeing you is starting to rust, just like those trailers. It has been in the same location for almost a month now. It has not moved. Nobody has gotten close to it. And I have good reason to believe there are some homeless people living in those abandoned trailers. If we, if you could get something done with that property for us, whether they want to put a South Shore Station or just clear the thing off, it's more of an eyesore now than it ever was. Also, this redistricting mess is just, is frustrating me beyond belief. And I know I'm not the only one. I, the, the, the party line thing of doing what the party wants you to do and getting things set up because we want this party to be in power here and this party to be in power over in this area, and we're going to concede on this is ridiculous. And I am, as we speak, contacting my state legislators to move St. Joseph County elected officials into the same four-year cycle where all commissioners, all council members will come up for vote that first Tuesday in November at the very same time. So if we've got nine and three, if we've got twelve people who the citizens of St. Joseph County feel aren't representing us, we can throw all twelve of you out at the same time. I am looking for that, and I am looking for all candidates to be at large, not committed to any district, get the best person in office that should be in there. We've got several people living in one district who all would be good representatives, but they're precluded from running for any of those seats once somebody is seated in, in that council district and in the Commissioner district. If we've, if we've got nine good council members in one district, and, and those are the nine best people, those are the nine that we should elect. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ralph Spellbrink. I live at two thirty-six Bank Street in Elkhart, four six five one six. That's Concord Township. I prepared a statement to read today. St. Joseph County with thirteen townships and Stark County with nine townships are in the Cankey River Valley. Is St. Joseph County a special county, or should, or should it have seven county council members as Stark County does? Harris Township is the only rectangular township in St. Joseph County. Stark County townships have these names: California, Center, Davis, Jackson, North Bend, Oregon Railroad, Washington, and Wayne. Redistricting this year in St. Joseph County is different than annexation in the nineteen nineties. Cities of Michawaka and South Bend were to have different standards than cities of corresponding populations in terms of annexation. Indiana Supreme Court determined this law is unconstitutional. Today is Fat Tuesday. Do I turn to send somebody?
Certainly, and give it to.
Frank.
Her administrator.
Is your contact information on there, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Deborah?
Good morning.
Sorry, good morning. Deborah Doral, two one six seven seven Otten Road, South Bend. I'd like to read to you some words from Joel Salatin, who is a sustainable farmer. Responsible living certainly includes being neighborly. That means we don't sweep our trash onto the neighbor's place. We don't pollute their water. We don't foul the air. Instead, we desire their happiness, health, and success. These are such fundamental rules of harmonious living that to clarify them seems childish. Yet, in many of our systems, the way we interact with each other is far from neighborly. The sheer scale of industrial systems, both farming and processing, often moves far beyond the carrying capacity of the community. Prior to cheap fuel and transportation, no business could amass this amount of plants or animals in a single place because oxygen, because oxygen, or horses could only move small amounts not very far in a day. But cheap fuel and mechanization changed that, creating for the first time in human history an option no longer bounded by ecological, social, or economic carrying capacity in a community. Instead, these systems could exceed community resources. Along with the scale came secrecy. From perimeter fencing to patents to special concessions and subsidies, the result is a structure that is fundamentally segregated rather than integrated. The CAFO stinks up its neighborhood and the landfill creates problems in its neighborhood. Integration solves both problems and lets each community function better. No discussion of community would be complete without appreciating common resources. Community accountability means that we respect shared resources like air, soil, and water. If my food production depletes water resources, erodes soil, or fills the air with noxious fumes and particles, I'm degenerating my community's wealth over the long term. The problem is not humans, the problem is our mentality. Are we community builders or community destroyers? These are not academic distinctions. We live on a planet created to give abundantly, to heal after abuse. This is not a place of scarcity, is it, it is a place of plenty. We can live responsibly in community in a way that honors the greater world. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the value of listening is highly underrated, so I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I do have a question.
Sure. Go ahead, Cheryl.
I think that was Joe Broden. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not finding the hand raising thing. I apologize. First of all, thank you. I wanted to ask a question, though, relative to the Commissioner maps. Is there a redline version that tracks the changes, both in a list format and a representative map changes, basically contrasting the newly approved versus the older map and district versions? I'm just basically looking to track the changes, whether it's in a list format, a map overlay format. But given that these are just being revealed today, at least is my understanding, wanting to make sure that the public has a good representation of all the changes. Thank you.
Counselor?
There is not a redline tracking of the maps that were proposed. However, they were done under the ADR rules and are supposed to be kept and should be kept private because we want our individuals to be able to negotiate in good faith without fear of reprisal. And the ultimate product of that is what has come forward for approval.
Though I think to Joe's point, can we, at some point, since, you know, as we move forward, show the distinction between what the map that was passed and the map that we currently are operating on?
Oh, from the original map to this map?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think that's, so folks can identify that.
Sure.
Joe, I can get you the copies that I was shown, if you'd like to look at them, because it's a enlightening aspect of how this all morphed to the final decision.
I think Commissioner, thank you, I think Commissioner Castelny stated it far more accurately than I did, that it is, it has been on your agenda, and it will be on the agenda apparently later on for the county council. And I think in all, toward transparency on the whole matter, not just for myself, right, as someone who was able to sit in on this meeting this morning, but for the public, who's obviously most directly impacted by this, to have that representation, both in terms of a listing of the changes, you know, from a precinct level, and then, you know, if, if you're going to include in your agenda packet today the maps that represent them, I just think it would be transparent and helpful for the public purposes going forward to see that presentation.
So those maps will be, will be released now that we are able to do so publicly. They, they will be released and disseminated, so that information can be given. Cheryl, I see your hand up.
Good morning. Yes, Cheryl Nix, one seven nine oh one Sable Ridge Drive. And I just wanted to publicly state that I am happy to see the renewed contract for Our Lady of the Road managing funding for Hotels for Now. I think that the dust-up over this was unfortunate. I disagree that the only choice you had was a hammer, but it appears that we are now going to move forward, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, or any, any other public comments?
Yeah, thank you to the Commission for allowing me to speak this morning. My name is Robert Swinson. I'm the principal owner of Firm Seventy LLC, and I'm a relocation consultant. I have been retained by Mr. Rick Buchanan, the former homeowner and business owner displaced by the county due to the Douglas Worldwide Inocent. Mr. Buchanan was provided certain relocation benefits, but believed he was entitled to additional relocation benefits. I reviewed his case and determined he was indeed entitled to more. Claims totaling just short of fifty thousand dollars was submitted to the county's attorney, Mr. Phil Garrett, which he denied. A formal appeal was then submitted to the attorney on River Twelve, two thousand twenty-one. Three and a half months later, on February twenty-six, I was informed by Mr. Garrett that the county concluded its relocation appeal. According to an independent reviewer assigned to the case, whose identity was never revealed to Mr. Buchanan, Mr. Buchanan was denied all but two thousand eight hundred dollars in appealed claims. The Uniform Relocation Act is intended to provide fair, consistent, and equitable treatment of persons displaced by public agencies. And when persons feel aggrieved, there are provisions within the regulations for grievances to be heard, but not in Mr. Buchanan's case. Not only were his claims denied, his right to be heard was denied. There was no due process here, no transparency, no impartial hearing for Mr. Buchanan to be, to plead his case, no opportunity to submit evidence and other facts, and no opportunity to review his relocation file. This abuse of the county's power violates Mr. Buchanan's relocation rights. For these reasons, I assert the county is in violation of several federal regulations. One, the county failed to demonstrate it uses Federal Highway Administration-approved. One, the county failed to demonstrate it uses Federal Highway Administration-approved right-of-way procedures for relocation activities, and has failed to demonstrate it certified in writing that it will adopt and use Federal Highway-approved right-of-way procedures. From the appeals section of the Uniform Relocation Act, the county failed to properly review the appeal. It took three and a half months for the county to review the case, and it did so improperly. Three, the county initially denied the appeal, arguing Mr. Buchanan did not have standing to appeal. An agency cannot deny an appeal for any reason. The county did not make available for review any and all documents pertinent to Mr. Buchanan's appeal. Five, the county failed to consider all pertinent information and other material necessary to ensure a fair and full review of the appeal by denying Mr. Buchanan the right to submit evidence. The county further failed to ensure a fair and full review of the appeal by denying an actual hearing. Instead, the county adopted, or opted, to have an independent reviewer rule on the matter.
You have 20 seconds, sir, you have 20 seconds.
Pardon? 20 seconds?
20 seconds.
Therefore, I assert county staff and its agents have violated Mr. Buchanan's relocation rights and have denied otherwise relocation entitlements. I suspect he is not the only one affected by the Douglas Road Project. For these reasons, I have submitted a formal complaint to the Indiana Department of Transportation, and will be filing a similar complaint with Federal Highway Administration.
Okay, thank you, sir, your time is up.
Noted that failure to comply with federal regulations could jeopardize existing and future federal funding for the county.
Are there any other public comments? Hearing and seeing none, a motion to recess is in order.
It's all moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.